Welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Webster today Tuesday, 13, 2024. We have a number of items today. We have one table item and we have seven scheduled matters for today. Here's a proof of all the legal publication for all the items. The board does have the right goals to be out of here by 10 o'clock with the number of items we have. If we don't, we may have to table the last couple of items. Hopefully, we don't get there heads up. For any during public speaking sessions, we will be limiting public comments to one in five minutes. So keep that in mind. That for public minutes?
Mrs. Polo here, Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Short.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Liedner.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Artesa.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. May the physical, the legal, and the justice for all.
I'd like to make a slight change to the agenda that we have. I'd like to move splash car wash, one year extension of approvals up to the first item. Then we'll move back to the table items. Hope you can do that if I can have representative.
Yes, my name is Anne Riley. I represent the applicant, the owner of the property. I actually wasn't supposed to be here. My client was supposed to be here, so last minute I got sent over here. So we're just looking for another extension. We're still in about one location. So definitely have to lose our bearings.
Very good. I've had a chance to go through all the paperwork. I don't know if anybody here has any questions or comments on the one year extension?
Can you just briefly, if you could, what's the expectation on the ending of the litigation?
We're getting very close. Just not close enough.
Any other questions?
What does that mean? Is that going to mean fully dragged out again?
We're hoping that once we complete this, the deposition, depositions have been completed and there's a motion. The litigation attorney is handling a motion. And once it does either this will go forward as a car wash. That's what we're hoping for.
So we shouldn't hear back here next year for an extension, correct?
I would say no.
Hopefully. How come? You have other questions?
Do we need another car wash?
Fortunately, it's not for us to determine.
That's already been determined.
All right. Open up to the public. Anybody want to speak for or against this project? All right. Do I have to wait for procedure yet?
No.
No? All right. Yes, made a motion to grant a one-year extension on previously approved. Date of the previous approval was 20th of August, 22?
23rd.
23rd?
The original is August 23, 2022, and they add extension.
Yep. No, it's right in front of me. Thank you. To be extended to August 23, 2025.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
Mrs. Polo. Aye. Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Mr. Liedner.
Aye. We have your extension for one year.
Thank you very much.
Hope you all.
It's with the same conditions.
Yep.
The original, correct?
All same conditions. Thank you.
Anne, just one question. Are you going to be applying for an extension of the site plan approvals?
Yes, we've already submitted that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move back to our table matters. 671 Willow Lane accessory structure?
671 Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671 Willow Lane. Advocate Brian Bishoping is requesting area variances to allow the sites that may have less than what is required and to allow the placement of an accessory structure to be near to the front room of the rear of the line of main residence associated with the construction of a 500 square foot detached roof frame structure on a .46 acre parcel in the SBL number 065 with 13-2-11 located in an R3 single unit residential district in intersections 350-12 and 350-36 of the building in Webster.
Hey, Brian.
How are you?
Good. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Want to go through the project again?
So the second floor was eliminated. And I'm just going to have shelving inside now. The measurements have been updated so that it is within the 20 by 25 footprint. And not exceeding 20 feet tall.
Okay. All right. So you also submitted information on the materials?
Yes.
So it looks like the industrial metal building, if you will, or pole barn type material?
It's metal, metal set, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Not sign, the roof is.
And roof as well, correct? Okay. All right. Actually, you also submitted a breakdown of the cost as well.
Yes.
Thank you. I know the last time we spoke, there was concerns of, you know, a building that's being put up in a residential area that is 20 feet tall, 20 by 25, that ultimately would have a more industrial type look and would look out of place in the neighborhood itself. And I still have that concern significantly. You know, and I appreciate that you submitted on the materials because I know the last time we spoke, you know, we had mentioned making it look similar to the house, to a residential. And at that point, you didn't have the material decided on at that point in time. So I appreciate all the information here. Does the board have any other questions? Yeah, with the removal of the second floor, what is the need for the height?
I need storage space, so I'm going to have shelving that's 20 feet tall and be able to store on that shop. So I still need the storage. It's just, I'm not looking to have. The decision that was made at the last meeting by creating, by setting the structure that was now 1,000 square feet because of the second level that required me to get a third variance because my house is not for 1,000 square feet. So the way to have a 500 square foot structure without even that other variance is to eliminate the second level and just have the storage.
Are you going to have a business at this location?
No.
You know, any resident that has a need for shelving 20 feet tall?
There's actually currently at Schlegel and Phillips a larger, in the same R3 zone as my property. It is definitely a lot larger because I believe the door is at least 12 feet tall, 10 feet wide. And it's the same residential format.
Any other questions? No?
If you could soften this up so it doesn't look that commercial. I know on the previous, we asked a question why can you incorporate that to his existing house? But we said incorrectly because it was more expensive than having to stand alone. But we are talking about residential here.
Right.
So the intent is to have both structures look similar.
So you're gonna side your house in metal siding?
I mean, eventually that's, it's currently metal siding right now.
It's aluminum siding that is mimics plank siding. So I mean, it's, you know, and what you submitted is a standing seam of.
Commercial.
Commercial, thank you, Chris, commercial grade siding that's roughly 18 or 24 inches on center. So it's not the same product. It is a commercial grade product.
I mean, the goal is the longevity of the structure. So when I make that transition with the house, the primary structure, that's, that's the goal, is the two are going to be similar.
Now, are you planning on changing color of this to the future color of your residence, which is going to be what?
I have a decided color.
So I guess this is what I'm going to say. At the end of the day, we have eight bullets that we have to abide by. This board has the option to say, you know, to review it to the best of our ability and make a decision. The last two, this is not an undesirable change. This is in a residential neighborhood. Phillips and Schlegel, yes, I understand, might still be in the same zone. However, those are more heavily larger roads than a residential neighborhood. So I would say that this becomes an undesirable change and this request is not significant. On one hand, having a storage unit 20 by 25, I don't see as being significant until we put that height of 20 feet on top. Now it becomes something much more significant. These are my opinions. So I guess from here, I mean, Brian, are you open to modifications to this structure? To have a storage unit on your property to be able to store your equipment, store your materials on the property?
So we currently have three other accessory structures, this size, in the neighborhood, in my current neighborhood.
I drove your neighborhood and I did not see any structure 20 feet high, 20 by 20.
I didn't say 20 feet high, but definitely 18 feet high, 18, 19 feet high. There's one that's 21 by 25. There's one that is 20 by 25. And they have a new backyard.
The ones that were identified the first time you were here were not those.
And then at the corner of Mill Creek and Willow, or Mill Creek and Holly, there is one that looks like an attached garage, but it is not an attached garage. And it's only 18 feet tall.
What do you got going on, Joshua?
I asked him to see if he could call up Google Earth.
Thank you.
Just so we can, we may not be able to see it from the street view, but at least we can see proximity and shadows cast.
Sure.
See how. Well, the general neighborhood is trying to see what it's like.
So Mill Creek and Holly, it would be the southeast corner of Mill Creek and Holly, right there.
Yes?
Yes.
Is that attached or detached? It is detached.
The peak might be at 20 feet, but certainly the leaves are around 10.
And it certainly has a residential look.
Right. The siding and the shutters and the window are all of the same scale as the house.
So that's one of the things I'm trying to get to, Brian, without being blunt about it. But the structure that has been submitted is a, in my opinion, a commercial looking structure. It is a low pitched roof and it does not fit within the neighborhood. Image that was just brought up, it was made to look to fit within the neighborhood. Are you open to?
Can we look at the ones that are on top at all?
Sure.
Let's see what we have. What the address of our. So it's actually, should Joshua close later curse of rights? I believe the one with the pool. Those backyards right there. You can see the corner of the wall.
But here's the other issue. Yours is not going to be in the backyard hidden by your house and hidden by trees?
Hidden by the hedge row.
On one side, right?
Have the structure, yes. I mean, I got a current picture of what it looks like today. There's only 4 feet from the hedge row currently to the stakes that are the corners of the structure. So when that gets cleaned up and then planted, definitely going to plant in the hedge row.
Now, are you planning on plantings around the building to soften the look of it?
No.
Because it is totally in your side yard. So the hedge row tied it from the neighbor to the north, but it's.
I have, I have a picture from today at 345. You want to pass it around or I have multiple copies. If you like to look at it today, you can see the stakes that are the corners closest to the, to the same structure.
I don't need to see it. I've been to the property a couple of times, so I know what it looks like. I don't know if anybody else wants to see it?
Yeah.
Go ahead. What I'm hearing, I guess, Brian, is you're set on this size, style, height material to be installed. What I'm hearing, I'm not, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not open to alterations to the look of this and to the size, height of this, correct?
The height, the footprint, everything falls into an accessory structure.
It does.
Proved in the town of Webster. So that's, that's what I'm hoping for is that size. The look of it is going to be complementing of the primary structure.
Okay. For you to build it in the location you need, you have to have a variance. This board has the ability to grant or deny that variance. Speaking for myself, I would want to see this softened and height reduced and materials modified so that it fits within the neighborhood. Again, not speaking for the rest of the board members, but that's what I would want. You are correct. The height fits within the code. We're not here talking about the height from a variance standpoint. We're talking about the location. But this board has that ability to grant that variance based on a number of factors. The look of it being one, again, the being an undesirable change and being a significance of a request. Those are two things that we have to ask ourselves. And we have to ask ourselves, is this an undesirable change for that neighborhood? Is what we have to ask ourselves. And I guess we can vote now as it stands? Or is there any room on your end to answer those questions different for other work groups?
I mean, again, I don't know. I looked at some options and I did not know that metal siding or roofing would be the issue.
Okay.
So that's, I'm sure there are other options for metal siding, but I don't know what the other.
Height wise though, you are set on the height and there is no, okay, very good. With that, did anyone open up to the public comment? No? Open up for anybody that wants to speak for or against this project? No? Bring it back to the board. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just want to call the applicant. Should this application be denied? To that be applied in front of the board for a period of one year without having this substantial change in the application that can cite the many similar with that number here. The board would have to prove that that's significant enough for change in order for us to be able to act on it. So I just want to.
It's just a sagging roofing?
It's a style.
I think it's the whole thing that you're within, I'm sorry, Don, it is.
It's, you know, it's a style. It doesn't look residential. What I want is next to my house absolutely not. I want one by my neighbor's house.
So to Don's point, right, it's the height in, it's not insignificant. I mean, we are talking the height of this is probably close to 18 feet at the leaves, based on what I'm seeing here. So it's the height, it's materials, it's a lot of it.
And rotation.
Right. They all play, they all play.
Yeah, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb.
And while, you know, at least I recognize and the rest of the board does as well, that, no, you're right. There's nothing against having a metal shed. There's nothing against having a 25 foot height or asking for their variance. The way that it's presented right now, at least for me, makes it difficult to help you. Because I agree with Don and Mr. Short in that I don't think it fits in. And while it's non-referment fitted, that's why you have a warrant as opposed to just writing a check and getting a variance. And like I said, I don't think it's any one issue that if you just made it shorter, it would look any, it would fit any better. I think it's a combination of stuff, but certainly I think the height and or the material has a lot, has a lot to do with it as far as the way I would want a whole lot of it.
Well, I think when you were before the board previously, the concern the board had was just that it needs to look residential. It needs to fit the neighborhood. I think you can still get what you need function wise, but just make it softer. Right now, it's just going to look like a metal pole standing.
Can be.
Not hidden behind your house.
So I guess, Don, with your comment, we have two options. You can pull the application right now and take a look, see if there's something that would appease this board. Or we can vote, let me, based on what you're hearing. I don't think it's going to go well. I'm not going to promise that, but it may.
So if I were to get a metal siding to look similar to the house, the primary structure?
In style. I understand you're going to change that siding because it's aged and faded.
Brian, there's a lot of things, right? We got material is one thing. The height is another thing. And the location is one. The one thing that we probably cannot do a whole lot about is the location. The other two, you can do a lot about and you can make that work within those two.
Okay. So the height is going to stay, the location we've already established. And to me, it's the third thing is the exterior finishes.
It's an exciting part in that's entirely residential, you know. It's not like you're in a mixed neighborhood where there's a farm across the street and.
If you are keeping the height, and I'm not, I think, if you are keeping the height and you're only changing materials? Talking for myself, I would still be against it. There would have to be significant changes to make this look like it fits within the residential neighborhood that you live in.
I can reapproach the architect and see what he can do.
Okay. So you're pulling the application at this point in time and?
Table up for next month.
Good. Sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion table, the application to.
All in favor? Aye. Next application, Woodsview Drive, for season room. Next application, Woodview Drive, Four Seasons Room.
Woodview Drive, Four Seasons Room, located at two ten Woodview Drive. Applicant Keystone Chestnut Deck is requesting area variances to allow a rear setback less than what is required associated with the conversion of an existing screen porch into the Four Seasons Room and in addition of a new screened porch on a point four seven acre parcel having SBL number zero five zero point two dash one dash ninety-eight located in an R two single-family residential district under section three five zero dash eleven of the Code of Webster.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Tell us a little bit about your project.
Yeah, I'm Nate Ash, and I'm Keystone Chestnut Deck, and this is Alan Brick, and he is the owner of the house that we are requesting a variance for. We're looking to create the current screened-in porch to a Four Seasons Room, like in addition to the house, pretty much. And then off the end of that, we would recreate another screened-in porch, pretty much similar to the existing structure. So it would just be, the existing structure is, I believe, fourteen feet, and we would be doing the same amount, just mirroring that same copy right in front of it. That takes us just across the sixty-foot rear property setback. So we would be looking for three feet of relief.
I was out at the site yesterday. Backyard's pretty woodsy, nice area. Can you tell me why to the back of the screen porch versus looking at the plan, it would be to the right or to the south? Why that location, is my question.
So you're saying, why take the porch off the west, northwest side versus like the south or east side, or south-south side?
That seemed to be the easiest approach, and it keeps our view of the woods great area. And to the west side, we have lots of planter boxes. Raise beds.
Is the building the screened area over a existing patio?
Yes.
Is that the statement?
Yes.
And another point is, I mean, the setback obviously will be correct on to the south, but it is going further away from the neighbors with going to the rear of the property. The other thing is, as far as building it, we just continue the A-frame, you know, directly out versus having to reverse an A-frame off the existing A-frame. And so it creates that whole flow of building a little easier.
Any questions from the board?
I think you had correspondence from your neighbor.
Yeah, we have a letter here, and they had no issues with it. I believe they are also ones that had a current, or hadn't had a similar variance approved on their property as well. So they are on board for it. We have a letter here if you want to see that.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Jeff, or Jeff, did we get a copy of that?
I believe I received it after I sent it in.
If we keep it to a record, it'd be better than...
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was just an email sent to me from Alan Boycriss, and also I have the conversation between them two as well, if you want to see that email as well.
So I'll just read this into the record. We are next-door neighbors of Chris and Alan Brick. We have no issues with their plan to convert their curb porch to a Four Seasons Room and to add a porch to the back of their house. David and Margaret Hagan, two oh eight Woodview Drive, Webster, New York, one four five eight oh. All right. No other questions from the board? Is there anybody that wants to speak for or against this project? No? Back to the board. Any other questions, comments that the board may have?
It, I cite this, it's the most logical location with respect to impact and the nearest neighbor sense of the pushing out in a direction where the neighbor really is not going to be able to see it because it's up against the retention pond side of the property. And then the property to the rear is more too far currently. So again, I don't think the firm will see it from the front.
There's no other discussions from the board? Vote on Seeker.
Make a motion for type two action?
Yep. Make a motion for a type-two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR Section six one seven point five of the Environmental Code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone to review findings?
The request is not out of character with the neighborhood. As was noted, the neighbor at two oh eight had a similar condition previously, I believe it was in two thousand nineteen, with a similar setback to add a room off to the back of the house. The benefit will not be a detriment to nearby properties. Again, the neighbor to the north is actually the retention pond, and the neighbor to the south sent a letter that he's not opposed to it. The benefit is really not achieved by any other method. They're enclosing the room that's currently there and extending it using the same roof lines, which makes the construction much more feasible. No adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. The difficulty is self-created, but most variances are, and it really doesn't impact any of the neighbors in the area. And it is, it will be a desirable change. The property is attractive now, and I don't think it will be any less attractive with this condition to it.
The variance is only to a point on the building, really.
Right, isn't it?
Doesn't include the whole side.
Correct, it's just the one corner.
It's broken.
Yep.
Okay. Make a motion for an area of variance to allow a rear setback less than what is required associated with the conversion of an existing screened porch into a Four Seasons Room in addition of a new screened porch on a zero point four seven acre parcel having SBL number zero five zero point zero two dash one dash nine eight located in an R two single-family residential district under section three five zero dash eleven of the Code of Webster. Forty-seven feet off... I was getting there. Forty-seven feet off the, I guess that would be the west property line versus fifty, which is required.
Mr. Shore?
Aye.
Mrs. Lola?
Aye.
Mr. Centola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
All right, you have your variance for your addition to the rear of the house. You have a rear meaningful time for construction. You still have to get a building permit to be able to complete the project.
I applied for a permit, so I'm guessing that just gets used now. I'll reapply, correct?
Josh?
Correct.
Yes. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, you have Jordan Drive Front porch.
Located at eight fifty-eight Jordan Drive, applicant Tom Wilkins is requesting area variances to allow a front setback less than what is required associated with the construction of one hundred and sixty square foot front porch on a point three one acre parcel having SBL number point number zero seven eight point one zero dash one dash fifty six located in an R three single-family residential district under section three five zero dash twelve of the Code of Webster.
How's it going?
Good, thanks.
Nate, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Yeah, so it's Tom Wilkins, the corner of Volt and Jordan Drive. We have a ranch house on the corner.
Stand up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. How's that? Better?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So we live on the corner of Volt and Jordan Drive. We have a front porch today, which is eight by ten, and it's eighteen inches height off of the ground. Want to expand that to make it eight by twenty, separate across the front of the house slightly. But unbeknownst, there is a variance in the current one, is actually over that time. So I didn't have that information at the time, too close to Jordan Drive, I believe, is where the variance is, from the front of the house to Jordan Drive. It's only thirty feet, and I think the, I don't know exactly, but I believe the code is like thirty-four, thirty-five feet on that. So that's what I'm looking for the variance for. And you have a neighbor next door to us, has a very similar deck with the same extensions on to that also.
So you're not coming any further closer to Jordan than your current porch, is correct? Chris making it...
Just making it a little bit wider than what it is? Yeah.
We're going towards it. Getting visible. Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions coming board? There is a variance already, Josh, for that current porch?
No, we weren't able to find one.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
It's a whole neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely, okay. It's pretty straightforward to me. I don't have any questions. Anybody from the board or anybody from the board? Over up to public, if anybody wants to speak for or against this project, please come on up. Back to the board. Assuming nobody has any more questions? Okay, with that, I'm gonna go Seeker, I'm gonna make a motion for a type-two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR Section six one seven point five of the Environmental Code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I mean, this request is not out of character for the neighborhood. As you mentioned, your neighbor next door has a very similar porch right in front. The porch is not going to be any taller or any closer to the front, to the road than your current porch. It will be a little bit wider. This does not create a detriment to any nearby properties as this is really attached to the house and close to the house. To make your porch, you know, a benefit, it's really not achievable by any other means. This is not a substantial request as there already is a porch there. And the neighborhood has porches all throughout that are viewable from roadside. There is no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. Difficulty is self-created to want to have a usable porch, but it's not unreasonable to have a usable porch in a front, in one's front yard. It's not a desirable change, again, as many of the houses in the neighborhood already have front porches. And it's not a significant request from this board. Any other findings that I maybe missed?
I'm checking out the setback porch.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be thirty feet or forty feet is required.
Okay. So are we gonna be thirty...what's the house currently off the street?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight point four?
The house is thirty-eight point four?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Let's see. This is for area variance for eight five eight Jordan Drive to allow a front setback less than what is required associated with construction of a hundred and sixty square foot front porch on a zero point three one acre parcel having SBL zero seven eight point one zero dash one five dash five six located in R three single-family resident residential district under section three five zero dash one two of the Code of Webster to provide the front porch no more than thirty feet in lieu of the forty feet required by the code. Porch would be no more than eight feet by twenty feet in the front of the house.
Mr. Shore?
Aye.
Mr. Centola?
Aye.
Mrs. Polo?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
You have your variance, you have one year meaningful time to start construction. You do need a building permit to be able to do the work. Good luck, and you have good evening.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Bay Road. Bay Road. Anybody here for seven twelve Bay Road? No? Okay, well, you can come back if you want. Yep. Arrowway Drive Garage Edition.
Located at eight twenty-three Arrowway Drive, applicant Corinne Mansfield is requesting an area variance to allow a front setback less than what is required associated with the construction of a six hundred and seventy-two square foot attached garage addition to an existing single-family residence on a zero point six three acre parcel having SBL number zero eight one point zero one dash one dash seven five located in an R two single-family residential district under section three five zero dash eleven of the Code of Webster.
How's it going?
Good.
Good. Tell us a little bit about your project. Start with your name and...
Oh, Brian Drecheck, and this is my wife Corinne Mansfield, the homeowner. And we're requesting a variance to add on and attach a two-car garage to the existing house.
So the only thing we got is the plan here. Do you have...what is the attached garage going to look?
It'll mirror the house, same siding, same look. And it'll look like it's gonna be connected to the house, and it'll be attached to it.
Height-wise? Do you have plans already? Is that something you can share with the board?
Yeah, I did some of the plans, the move plans with the...
I don't recall some of them.
I think you wanted to look at them before.
Josh, do you have?
I do not. It might have been submitted for building permit application, but that didn't transfer over to this one. If you have them electronically, you can email them and I can pull them up.
Have you all right now, Ken?
Sure, that would be awesome if you could do that.
So is there actually going to be a structure connected to garage to the existing garage? Or is that just a cover walkway or just...
It'll be like a, so the house here, the garage is gonna be here, and it'll be a little...
Wait, is that gonna be enclosed, or is that just gonna be...
It'll be enclosed, yeah, all enclosed, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Why this particular location?
Uh, because it's near the driveway right now. Right next to it.
We had a couple setbacks. Have we done it? Have we done it just continuing on straight? We have an addition behind it, so it would bump into the addition. So basically, our window would be looking at the garage. So really, our only option was to do it that way, kind of at an angle. We also thought about doing it straight down the driveway because I have a truck, and I can return it a little bit too much, so we have to do it in that way.
Gotcha. Could you use your man a little bit on that, Josh? It's okay.
New computer.
I see that.
Does it ask for any elevations?
I don't believe that any elevation provided. Do you have elevation drawings of what the building would look like?
No, this is basically what I have created.
Will the roof line be similar to the other garage?
Yeah.
So...
It basically limits each other, you know, one on the other.
Obviously, the stairs are going up to the...
Yeah, you need storage, storage up there.
We want it similar to our old house. We want a little twenty-foot circle that's what we wanted to do at this one.
Do you know what the height is gonna be at the garage?
It won't exceed the height of the current. The current structure... Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. The height won't exceed the height of the current house, the current structure.
We, our contractor made sure not to do that because he thought it would look like an apartment complex if they had the height of the garage going, you know, too much higher than the existing home, so.
Thank you.
It's that accessory building that's connected to the house.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. Why, if it was enclosed, it's kind of an addition.
Yeah.
Yeah. What was the address that you gave?
Twenty, twenty-three circle.
So, on that side, Bannerwood Drive side, you have essentially, there's three roof lines.
Right.
It's not gonna be any higher than the house. Which roof line are we talking about?
It will be... A little below the, so not the first roof line, the second roof line, it'll be...
The middle, the middle roof, if you will, right? Okay. Because, yeah.
Yes.
That makes sense, okay. And you said a little bit below that?
Yes.
Okay. Material wise, you said it looks like your vinyl siding on this side?
It'll match.
What's that?
It'll all match.
It'll all match, yeah.
We're actually gonna use any door that we created, so it's the same-sized door.
Okay. You converted the existing garage into living space?
Yeah, during COVID, we needed a little more room.
Yep, understood.
And the garage is gonna have a full loft over the backyard or it just could be a smaller area at the stairs up and down?
It'll be the hall.
Any other question or any other questions from the board? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody for or against this project that wants to speak? Having Josh, bring him back to the board. Having Josh, you don't need the images that he sent. Let's see if I can actually open those up. For my viewers. So Josh received a screenshot of what was on your phone, which is fine. I guess my question is if only the... It looks like there might have been another page based on the screenshot. Yeah, if you scroll up, there's a title block right there, so it looks like there might be more to it.
It could just be the way it created PDF.
It could be.
Josh, can you scroll down and see if it kind of...
Yeah. Uh, yes. Yeah, that would be great. Let's see if they have any dimensions on there.
Okay, yeah, that is a two.
Of course, they don't give you any dimensions whatsoever. Very nice of them. However, they are keeping the soffit line and the eve the same as your current house. Actually, it looks like it might be taller than that middle portion, but lower than the upper portion of your house based on what I'm seeing in this elevation. If you wouldn't mind sending that, Josh, I appreciate that. So the elevation, based on what was just shown to me, is actually below the top eve, but above that middle eve. Of their...
Who the dimensions are?
There's no dimensions for the heights.
We want it to twenty-five feet.
There is... I was rotating my phone, it's rotating. There is a dimension on the, on the truss. It looks like it says it's a nine-foot clear. I can't really tell. Inside the truss, it might be eight foot. And then there, and then the peak itself. So we'll just limit it to twenty-five.
Well, I'm just gonna limit it to about twenty-five. Allows us to vote then.
Yeah.
Keep them from meeting that requirement.
Any other questions from the board? I'm gonna make a motion for a type-two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section six-one-seven-point-five of the environmental code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the request will not be out of character to the neighborhood. All of the houses in the neighborhood do have garages. Most of them have two or three-car garages. Some of the homes actually have a third-paying garage added, whereas this is only the houses on the way to have the two-car garage because the previous garage was converted to the existing.
Yes.
There will be no detriment free to the property. This is a corner lot, but it looks like... It's quite a full double lot, but it's wider and matched into the nearest neighbor or other garage than most of the lots are. I guess this is a cluster subdivision because as you go further down Bannerwood, the houses are already done with the owner, but there is significant space between this room and... The nearest neighbor that I just... The neighbor two-eleven, or lot two-eleven. The, the house, the neighbor's house on the garage side also does not hit any windows on that side of the house. So as far as impacting and being in the view of the neighbor, they're not going to see it on the windowless side. The distance from this addition to the lot will still going to be forty-six feet. And then at least another ten feet to the house next door, so it's gonna be significantly spaced. The request is not substantial. It's certainly not an oversized garage. It's a two-car garage that's a little bit deeper to allow room for upstairs access to a storage loft. No physical or environmental impacts to the side or to the neighborhood. The difficulty is self-created, but the applicant does have room on the lot in order to do so. And I'll say it's not significant setback in this instance. It is... Is it forty feet, Josh? Because it's a corner lot and one side is forty and one would be...
This particular lot is a cluster development and has a thirty-five-foot front setback.
Okay, so I'm only going three feet beyond current?
Yeah, if you look at the instrument survey, it's really not as bad. It's really, the way it's shown on the instrument survey that was provided, that location is much closer to the road than it actually will be.
Yes.
Okay, because it is a corner.
I just wanna make sure the applicant's aware of that because it's not as much of a angle as the survey. It won't be.
Very good.
Who's our contractor that just wrote it?
Speak up into the mic.
Oh, sorry, our contractor's here back, I don't know what it is.
I don't want you back in the picture and say, "Oh, our contractor."
Well, Don approved it.
Well, that's why I'm pointing it out.
Don said it was good.
Get the roll of findings ready.
Okay, so I have to make a motion?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a front setback, front setback of thirty-two feet or thirty-five feet is required for the addition of a six-hundred-seventy-two-square-foot attached garage to an existing single-family residence at eight-twenty-three Bannerwood Drive in Town Buster. And the height of it, garage should not exceed twenty-five feet.
Go closer to Bannerwood, thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two feet to be honest.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Polo?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Centola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Lyken?
Aye.
You have your variance for your garage. You have one year complete project. You have to obtain a building permit prior to starting any more work.
Have any...
Next up, Anacircle Moonground Pool.
Located at three-sixty-one Anacircle, applicant Brandon Sosa is requesting area variances to allow a side setback less than what is required associated with the construction of a sixteen-foot, nice forty-foot in-ground swimming pool in a point-three-four-acre parcel given SPL number zero-five-zero-point-zero-four-dash-nine-dash-sixteen located in an R-three single-family residential district under sections three-five-zero-dash-twelve and three-five-zero-dash-forty-six of the code of the Town Buster.
How's it going?
Good, how are you guys doing?
Good. Tell us a little bit about your project, name, et cetera. Make sure you speak into the mic.
Name's Brandon Sosa at three-sixty-one Anacircle. I'm looking to install a sixteen-by-forty-foot in-ground pool in our backyard. Seeking an area variance for the side setback.
Okay. Side are fifteen feet, correct?
Awesome.
Based on this, to the water line is fourteen-point-three feet. I think when I was there, we were talking that the water line is gonna be fifteen feet.
Yeah, I, when I was, when we had the pool contractor come out, measured fifteen feet, it was fine. I started doing it on the flat map. It was off by nine inches, so I wanted worst-case scenario.
Okay. And then the concrete on that end is ten feet? That is what the concrete is on the end of the...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Why that size pool, why that location?
That size pool, we originally wanted it shorter and wider, but we ran into the easement in the back of the yard. So trying to keep the same area, we went a little longer, a little skinnier. That location, we felt that maximized distance from our neighbors and also kept a nice symmetrical look for the backyard. Couple slides down, if you see. If we move it any other direction, we actually get closer to our neighbors than for a little way.
I think there's one over there with the rotations, Josh.
And that one's the easement.
Yep. By forty feet?
Just while we were looking at the functionality of the pool, there's sun ledge and a shallow in the deep end. Get everything warmed up a bit, hopefully.
How long is the shallow end?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it's ten feet.
Maybe about fifteen feet.
They are literally all over.
I know, but based on mine, it's about fifteen feet.
So the deep end is gonna be seven feet, so it allowed a larger shallow end. That should be close to accurate where the lines are.
Think about it, or a little more specific.
Well, yeah, I, yeah. Other questions from the board?
Would you swap the location? It's gonna say can you flip it so that the... The shallow end is to the left of the pool as I'm looking at it in this view. And then the wider concrete would be on the outside, which would give you a, the pool in the same place and flip the widths of the decking end each other, if that makes sense?
Yes, so the updated plan, if you go to the other one, Josh, we're actually showing ten feet on each end. So based off kind of what we've been looking at, you know, ten feet on one side for some ledge and tanning and lounging on the other side to give room for solar cover if it's jumping into the pool. So I wanted it being symmetrical on the end.
Do you have a copy of the board?
No.
Can I just ask for the solar cover? Because otherwise, it's gonna be a shallow.
Gotcha.
Questions from the board? Bannerwood, over to public. Anybody wants to speak for or against this project? Please come on up. Speaker name and address, and please speak into the mic.
My name's Bob Curtis. I live at fourteen-seventy-four Bushwood Circle. And when you look at the lot, it has a point to it. We live kitty-corner, so Brandon at that point, and we have no objection.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I also forgot to mention there was a sign that said the name of my neighbor to decide what variance is that in support or no objections to the line.
I think that was included as well. And you have a hotline submission from Amy, that I'll read in, from Amy Deluce at three-five-six Anacircle, stating I do not think this variance should be approved. They are going to disrupt the beauty of the neighborhood. These people think they are above all laws and rules of the neighborhood and it needs to be a problem. They have already had a number of former insurance claims due to negligence, dog attack, child, and they had a house, had a house fire in a matter of a few weeks. They also have called the police about people being too close to their property multiple times, which is hugely short of resources, I figure. Thanks, come back, guys. Anyway, she's opposed to.
I understand.
This is, is also part of the file. With that, bring it back to the board. If there's no other public, bring it back to the board. Anybody, any other comments or questions from the board?
You have to modify the fence to make sure that it meets the L.
Yes, I've already, under agreement with the fence installer, to add the correct lots. I think they're still closing, dropping.
Oh, it's still closing?
Yep, all that stuff, yeah.
You're not removing, the fence that will be in place will be in the same location as the car, that's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Josh, and you may not, I didn't know where to look for it. I know this board granted side setback variances at three-sixty-five, and I think at three-sixty-seven, maybe it was across the street.
They're similar.
I know at least three-sixty-five because I do remember that one, the contractor replaced the pool in part day and it was a fix-it variance.
I guess up a couple, two more houses, I think. It's not, I don't think the pool's in on this, which one?
The kidney shaped one?
The opposite side, yeah, that's one of the, one of the questions. It's a cross, should I diagonally?
I know that one we had a variance because that's, I almost think that was written on that line. And then I think three sixty-seven as well, but I can't, I can't.
Josh, it's two more from where the cursor was, on the other side of the street, right there. There's a pool there, now it's not there, it's that way.
And if it's not, maybe that's okay, because we have similar, similar conditions in the neighborhood. The lots are point three acres, they're tiny.
Do you have comments from the board?
It is a cluster subdivision.
All right, I'm going to make a motion for a type-two action under secret, pursuant to NYCRR section six point seven point five of the environmental code. All who's in favor?
Aye.
The, the report person, I can't kick it off. The application, I believe, is out of character with the neighborhood as there are many residences with pools in the back area. The application will not be a detriment to the neighborhood or the town. Based on, he has looked at other options, so I think it minimizes the amount of variances that he requires. So it's not really achievable by any other methods. I don't think there'll be any adverse effects to the neighborhood. He's asking for the minimal, really necessary with his setbacks. And while the difficulty is self-created, it is a small lot. So to put in something that helps you enjoy your investment, I don't think it's, that's really a bad thing. And overall, I don't think it's an undesirable use.
Next, a neighbor submitted a letter of aid. Didn't that check to meet the request?
And we had a neighbor come in from over property line to state, no objection as well, so.
Well, it is also, it's located on the east side of the lot. There is a split between three sixty-one and three sixty-five, so that just gives it the illusion of having extra space between the pool and the neighbor.
With that, I meant to ask earlier, you are not going to be in the easement at all, any way, shape, or form, correct?
No, no, not in the easement at all.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make a motion for an area variance to allow a side setback less than what is required. Associated with construction of a sixteen-foot by forty-foot in-ground swimming pool. With ten-foot concrete area. East, no, is it east and the west side?
North and south.
North and south side, sorry, of the pool. On a zero-point-three-four acre parcel having SPL zero five zero zero four, air side, air sixteen. Located in an R three single-family residential district. Under sections three five zero one two and three five zero four six of the pound of code Webster. The pool and deck will not be located in the drainage easement at all. The pool waterline will not be any closer to, is that this north? North line, more than fourteen foot, three inches. And the concrete will not be any closer to the property line of four-point-three, four-point-three feet. I meant four-point-three feet, so I'd say four-point-three. I think I covered it.
Did you say it was going to be fifteen, or are you just going fourteen point three?
So the, the plan is to center it on the patio and based off numbers on the survey, that'll want to be fourteen point three.
Give me a second.
Second.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
Mr. Centola.
Aye.
Mr. Forno.
Aye.
Mr. Hausen.
Aye.
Mr. Lightman.
Aye.
All right, you have your variance on your one year for municipal construction. You do need, for whole, I believe you do need in your building permit as well. All right? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Watered Road, parking garage addition.
Located at seventeen zero six Watered Road. Applicant Carl Appleina is requesting an area variance to allow a side setback less than what is required. Associated with the construction of a four-hundred-twenty square foot garage addition to an existing single-family dwelling in a two-point-zero acre parcel. Given SPL number zero five zero point zero two dash one dash two eight. Located within the large lot, R three single-family residential district. Under section three five zero dash thirteen of the code of the town of Webster.
How's it going?
Good, good evening, Al La Rue, McManly Rue Associates. How is the homeowner, is your roommate tonight? We think that the proposed addition, we're looking for a six-and-a-half foot side setback. And I've calculated, and we've done the survey, and I've calculated a fourteen-foot by thirty-foot proposed addition. Would yield about a six-point-nine-two or a six-point-nine-nine side setback. And six, six-point-five gives us a little bit of a room when, during construction or whatever. So we, we've added a little stuff in there. We don't think that the, the character of the neighborhood will be changed at all by this. In fact, the, the new garage will be set back eight feet from the front of the existing garage. And, and there's a pretty prominent tree stand to the, to the south, protecting the neighbor. So other than that, it looks like a good location and, and there's no other way to, to put the third car on this. So with that, I'll turn to over to any questions you might have from me or Carl.
Okay, just want to say one thing.
Speak into the mic.
But we're, I'm sorry?
Speak into the mic.
Okay. Basically, I'm a hundred and twenty-two feet behind this addition, I'm a hundred and twenty-two feet behind my next starting landlord. He is not objected to it, so let's start there.
Thank you, I was out at your sec yesterday. Really, really don't have any other place to provide this addition. I kind of sandwiched in on that property, if you will. And you have a fairly large drop-off on the east side of the property as well, so. And I appreciate you adding it all staked out, please, so I could kind of visualize where it would end up going. So I, I do greatly appreciate that. Height, or is your intention, I know it's going to be stepped back. Is your intention to keep the height roughly the same height as what the peak is of your current garages?
It, they.
It's okay.
Basically, it'll probably be a little shorter because I've got a window on the east side in the, in the existing structure. So it might be five, five-twelve, might be five and a half tall.
Gotcha.
But it's going to be within that range. That's why I set it back so far, so I would miss the window.
Gotcha, very good. Other questions from the board?
Are you telling me I'm keeping the shed in front of the proposed addition? In front of your house?
I'm sorry?
Are you depending, are you keeping the shed?
Are you telling me to keep the shed in that?
Yes, yes.
Do you have a?
It's not, it's not, it's just set up on piers right now. It is not connected to anything. I'll, I'll make sure what's wrong.
Do you have a variance for that shed?
Do you have a variance for the shed because it's in front of the main structure?
This basically been done thirty years ago.
Pre-existing, not new forming.
I think we had an ordinance thirty years ago. I know we had an ordinance thirty years ago.
You were here thirty years ago.
Yes, I was.
So, Doug.
How would you see this debt relocated?
How would you relocate it? I'm trying to, how would you relocate that? I'd have to slide it off, off of the piers that it's on. Drag it around the back of the house, going to the west. I'm sorry, going to the east.
That's right.
It would be a little bit practical because there's a long, I'd have to break it a long over two hundred feet.
I would like to have this to inform either by relocating the shed that's in front of the existing house. Or having the applicant apply for a variance for that shed. To make, by my preferences. You know, if they have equipment, I'm going to build the addition to utilize it, get you rolled in the back. Other options, apply for the variance.
There are two, two sheds.
Some, because there's another shed.
Well, I, I wasn't going yet to have one, because I want to look at the song part.
I don't know why everyone's shooting.
For, because it's the fire one, so.
Yeah, right.
And you bring your, yeah, that's all slope. It's hard to move, it's all slope.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about that, the shed right now. There's a, there's a slope on the east side of the existing home. And it wouldn't be very easy to move that, slide that shed.
You'd have to, you'd have to do it before the construction started, because you could move it on the west side of the, of the house.
Oh, before the, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it like it, that's built, but it is not built. So can you just slide that back like that?
Probably back to.
Behind the house? Before construction?
That's possible, that, that, that's the only way I could get it back to.
That would be appreciated.
Okay.
And I would, you know, if we put this, I have a patient, asking the rest for going. I'd like to make it a position that apply with the ordinance.
Carl agrees that, that he'll slide that back during construction, prior to construction of the addition.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Let's catch up. Any other questions from the board? Over to the public?
My name is Brian Bishopin. I live at six seventy-one Willow Lane. I am here representing the property directly to the east. And my only concern is what if after the structure is completed, the addition is completed? How do you get any equipment to the backyard to maintain a septic system? Other than that, if there's a way to make things happen, I'm not, no objections.
Okay. Does somebody else speak to?
No, I just want to let you know that I am the owner of that parcel that's to the east.
To the east, so the field.
Yeah, and if you don't show the drawing of the.
Can you speak into the mic?
You don't show the property stake up by the road. And if you look down through the rock wall and the wood storage are on the property line, on the west side of our property. See that posted sign?
Yep.
Okay, right in there is where the GPS survey was done.
You did it.
There's two stakes missing up farther, but.
The pins are still at that position, the stakes have rotted out. I have not disturbed any pins.
So, what's your question, sir? The, the survey stakes are indicating the survey stakes.
No, I'm just saying, the only one that I can locate right now is, is the one by the posted sign.
Okay. So the only issue would be in the future, after construction, getting equipment to the backyard.
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
Basically, what I would like to say is, it's an access road to the east of that access road. And there's still thirty, I'm sorry, fifteen feet of roadway going back. To the east of that is a hundred-foot easement because the water pipeline that went through for the water tinfoil. It is not obstructing anything. The pins that are supposedly been removed by me have never been touched. The states have rotted out and fallen down. I'm not going to replace the states, but I did not touch the pins, again, to block you blowing.
When, we did a survey for that piece to the east, and we put those stakes in the ground. When we did this, Carl's house, we found those pins and used them part of the survey. So they're there, but the, the wooden lat that marks them, you know, that rotted out, but they're, they're still there. And we could always put marker lat beside them so you can find them.
And you, you've placed cat rebarbers along the eastern property line, correct?
Right, rebarbers with my name and cat line, right.
So can you tell me where, hold on, hold, hold on. Can you tell me where your septic system is? Because I, I don't see it identified on your, on the survey. Do you know where, where it is?
The septic system.
My septic system is in the center of the backyard.
So kind of dead center? So.
Dead center.
Dead center of the yard, yes.
In front of the wood line.
So I have at least twenty feet either, either way.
But how far back from the house?
How far back is it? I'd say about to the, um, ten, maybe fifty feet. Beyond that, you've about.
How high is it?
The whole system.
Okay.
Carl's house is nineteen point three-six feet off the property line, on the side.
Yep, I, I see that. And how far off is the stone wall? The stone wall, roughly, roughly on the property line? Maybe two feet off the property line, I had to guess, but I'm strictly guessing.
The stone wall on the east side?
The stone wall on the east side, correct.
We didn't, we didn't locate it?
I'd say it's at least eight or nine feet back. Like I said, it is not obstructing the roadway going back. Because it's on a slope of the house.
There are also piers in front of the wall that protrudes to the east, like where Joshua's pointing to right now. I didn't, I didn't check that out at the time because I didn't think it was pertinent when I, when I went to visit the site, sorry.
Mr. La Rue, did you, in the survey that I have here, it indicates that, I'm calling it a firewood shed? You did locate that?
We did.
Okay. So again, looking at the photos here, if I, perspective changes things, obviously, but it looks like the stone wall is roughly in line with the back of that, back of that shed, roughly. Just what we have, what we have up on the screen there.
That's what it looks like in the photo, yeah.
Plus or minus, obviously. Okay. How would you propose to get, to service your septic system in the rear of the house with the addition?
Well, you drive down the, back down the driveway, which is on the west side. You run the shows out, so I'm not on anybody's land at that particular point. And that's been done dozens of times, so.
Okay, very good. I'm going to ask a silly question here, Josh. I'm going to ask a silly question here, Josh. Septic systems are aligned in the front property?
Uh, the town actually does not regulate septic systems. It's the county health department.
Okay. So if a new septic system was required and the applicant did not have access or permission from anybody to use their property to get equipment, he could put it in the front door if he needed.
Those are met in our county.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
In progress.
Yep.
Those counties sort of suck along with. Real long with.
That was my job for twenty years, so I, two-hundred feet is, uh, closes what I used to carry, so, yeah.
A fun deal.
No.
No, I, I know that.
The, another option, yeah, thank you. Another option would be potentially putting a garage door on the back of, uh, on the back of the addition as well to be able to do a drive-through if you had to. Is that something you'd be open to?
Put a garage door in back of your addition.
You want a garage?
Yeah, you can put a garage door in.
Yeah, yeah. Like a fourteen feet.
Yes, you could do that.
Okay.
So he can drive through, right?
And here they do is, I would expect that shed to, uh, outlast the septic system.
No.
No, no. I'm assuming that shed won't last now.
You're, we're speaking out of the wood, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm trying.
The wood storage. Okay.
Is, is the, the party that's opposing that store, is it, is that not the concern? Is this the septic or is there somebody?
No, 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 I'm just concerned about that laneway is our farm laneway.
Right.
That lane belongs on the farm, yes. Monroe County Water gave, got an easement to put in the water line five, ten, six years ago, whatever it was. Now, we can work the farm, but that is the lane for the farm. It's not for everyone to use. My brother and I own the farm together now. So we just don't.
Who else would use that lane other than, other than you?
A lot of people like to drive back.
To do what?
Horse around. Goes, they go through my backyard as well.
I just want to make it clear that, you know, that laneway is part of the farm. That's all.
Sir, I don't know that we got your name and your address for the record.
My address is nineteen Pierce Street in the Village.
In the name.
But I am the one you sent the cart to at seventeen-eighty Woodard Road is where the farm is located.
Okay.
And this is, again, as I like to ask, how does the garage going up or down, okay, frequency of other people other than the applicant use, use the, uh, the roadway?
It's private property.
No, no, I, I understand, relevant to the garage equipment. How does that impact?
No, no, I just want to make sure.
Everyone on the one side wants to make sure that it is known that the, uh, won't be any access on the.
No, I understand that, but the, it's just the applicant.
Yeah.
But he, the, this gentleman seems to be concerned about the rest of the public. I just don't know how, whether the garage is on the other side of the house.
No, no, I'm not worried about that.
Okay, then I guess I just don't understand it, alright.
Your concern is access in the applicant using that, that space and access to yours.
He's worrying about the rest of the public, doesn't think it's that relevant.
It's not.
I think.
It's not the rest of the public, yep, it's, if a structure goes there, locks that path, another path is potentially underutilized.
Understood.
That's, that's all. Yep, there is no other.
But how many times did somebody have a septic? Do you have a septic system? I grew up on one, yes.
Okay.
So did I. There are lots of, that serve a septic system that are very busy. So, that's all. That was the concern.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. I think we've made the point that, um, basically the backside of the wood storage on the east side of the wood storage is private property and, and not an access road lane. And the applicant understands that, correct?
We know exactly.
Okay. Alright, um. Ryan, Chris, Don, somebody want to go through the findings? Oh, we did through Seeker, thank you, appreciate that. I'd like to make a motion for a type-two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR section six-point-seven-four-five of the environmental code. All in favor?
Aye.
Don, you want to take it?
Application, uh, from the board, uh, is asking to build a garage addition, uh, which has been commented , uh, especially within this area, uh, looking to locate the, on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the existing house.
There are, there'll be no detriment created to, um.
The area.
Nearby properties. The owner has acknowledged that the parcel to the east, um, one foot, uh, point, one-point-seven feet off of the rear of their wood shed, uh, is private property and not an access road to the rear, the rear of their house. The neighbor to the west has not provided any objections, so, uh, there will be not, no detriment created to nearby properties. Uh, the benefit, uh, really is, is not achievable by any method. The garage, the current garage is on the, uh, west side of the property. This is adding us an additional bay on the west side of the property. Uh, the east side, uh, there is a elevation change as well as further away from the garage, uh, further away from the existing garage, so really not feasible. The request is not substantial. It is adding, uh, to the existing house. Uh, house is already about a hundred-and-twenty feet behind closest residential house, house, neighbor. There is no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood being set so far back. Um, and the plans that were submitted are going to mimic the current house, um, as, as currently submitted. Difficulty, uh, where the house is located, the difficulty is not really self-created. It is, uh, to be able to make the addition, uh, they would have to go into the, into the, um, side setback. This is not an undesirable change being to set so far back and the, um, and the style of the addition. The request is not significant. Mike, you may, whoops, sorry.
The funny, what I had on is.
On the shed?
The shed. Pretty too long, like.
Well, yeah, that wasn't the motion, I was just in the findings, so, so I was going to do the motion. Like to make a motion for an area variance to allow a side setback, um, no less than
Four-point-six.
Six-point-five feet, I believe, uh, six-point-five feet, um, off the, uh, west property line. Uh, associated with the construction of a four-hundred-and-twenty square-foot garage addition to the existing single-family dwelling on a two-acre parcel having SPL zero-five-zero-point-zero-two-dash-one-dash-two-eight located in a L.L. large lot, single-family residential district. Um, the, there is an existing shed, uh, in the front of the, um, residence that will need to be moved to the rear of the residence. Um, and a pass, or a garage door both on the front and rear of the, uh, garage addition will be required for access to the rear of the garage. I think I covered it. You got a second?
Second.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mrs. Bowler. Aye. Mr. Hausen.
Aye.
Mr. Light.
Aye.
You have your variance for, um, your garage addition. Uh, you have one year of meaningful construction and, uh, you do have to get building, uh, building permit and approval. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Um, we do need to table the, um, Bay Road, seven-twelve Bay Road to the September twenty meeting. And then Josh, if you have any questions, I'd like to. Thank you.
Just some things that I've said.
Oh, from?
June seventh or whatever.
True, mate.
Thank you. The one that you just said.
All of the most reasonable, not the general.
That is true.
That is.
Well, I'm sorry, I just showed.
There is two. Okay, this is from time and.
I just want to add something.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have to make a motion to. Bush, did they wrote for, for, located seven-twelve, second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you do.
Chris, second. And everybody, aye, on, on, favor, aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Alright, and then we will hold the minutes.
Till next, next one?
Till last time.
Okay.
And the next meeting is September tenth.
Yep. Okay, thank you, everybody, uh, this concludes our meeting. Yes, I, I usually, but when we were trying to make, I don't think that's the point he was trying to make.
What was he trying to?
The, the.
He said, I'm not, you know, you play the whole thing, sorry. This guy, yeah, that's the only reason why he was here, to break the law. So we need to understand the stuff, like about people going down the road, that this guy is, uh, it's all. One, sorry, two, three years of something, thank you. And he said, he said, this shed is an evidence.